All right, that was, thank you all. That was great. Give yourself a round of applause. That was really good. All right, I'm gonna try to run through these things and answer them as best I can. Forgive me for being direct, but time's short. So, I had about four people ask me about citizen planning and citizen involvement. And their specific request is that we fund a citizen participation project that's over and above all the public meetings that we already have and all the things that we're already doing. One of the, and I'll hit each one of them when I go, but I'm not gonna repeat the entire story, but generally speaking, citizen engagement is very important for this office. We actually have created an Office of Neighborhood Engagement. Lucas Diaz is the head of it. Lucas, stand up please. Lucas was a community organizer. Lucas came into the city. We have individuals whose sole job it is every day is to stay in direct communication with all of the neighborhood organizations. We have 73 neighborhoods in the city. We have a large number of community organizations. We have a specific person in the mayor's office whose sole job is to stay in constant communication with the neighborhood organizations, who are awesome, who did a great job before Katrina, after Katrina, and who continue to be. The request on the table is would you put $3 million in the budget to fund something over and above that? And my answer is no. Not this year, and this is the reason why. Although I agree that potentially sustainability over a long period of time, but at this point where our budget is, we believe the process that we have right now is working. You now know we have a public nerd commission that meets every month. Everybody can come to all the meetings. We have an open Blight Stat meeting every two weeks. Everybody's welcome to come. Crime Stat with the city police department is meeting every week. The public is not on an invited to come. And all of those things you can participate in, and this is about as direct as you can get, right? With citizens telling me or the council members unfettered by a middle layer of anybody else what it is that you need. So, we're working in that direction. It may very well be. As the city gets more financially healthy, as we begin to create stable organizational structures, that that's an idea that will be worth considering, but it's not my intention to put it in the budget this year. And that's my answer to that particular issue. A number of people have come, they've followed me around everywhere we've gone, and been good community advocates. So, I appreciate you for your aggression, and I thank you, but that's my position on that issue. Reverend Tony, thank you for looking everybody up. You're marrying more people than anybody in America. I want you to, I want you, since you talked about a museum, I want you to talk about the point person for cultural issues. Scott Hutchison, Scott, are you in the room? Would you see Tony? Y'all gonna get to know Scott before the end of the meeting, but Scott served as the Assistant Secretary for Cultural Affairs when I had the pleasure of being the Lieutenant Governor. He's fantastic, and he's handling a lot of incredible things for the city. Shirley, Circle Food. Love for Circle Food to be open. Circle Food's a private business, and they have been working with Amy Cork. Amy, where are you? Amy, stand up. Everybody that talked about fresh food initiatives, this is the young lady that you wanna see at the end of the night. But in any event, we have really been trying to speak to them about standing back up, and we're gonna try to help them if we can, but they've got financing issues. It would be great if Circle Foods could really anchor that part of the neighborhood. A long history, you know, but again, they gotta find a way to make ends meet, and it's a similar issue with the other fresh food initiatives that we are dealing with. By the way, I'll kinda deal with this as one, 'cause I think we have three questions on fresh food initiatives. We have, what's the number, Amy? Five million? $14 million. Now, I can give all of that money to one person, and they can open up a big old thing. Or we can give it to a whole bunch of people. Or we can find a way to leverage public-private assets and really have it spread out over the place. That's why we have an application process. So, the young ladies that did the commercial earlier that were looking for the $360,000, get your application in. And if you're better than the next person, you're gonna get chosen. You need to think about where you're gonna be, how many people you're gonna serve, and whether or not you can provide a better value for the taxpayers than somebody else that's gonna apply. It's gonna be an open, transparent process, and we're gonna have that part of our place-based development. So, we'd love to have you. The more people, the merrier, because we need fresh food initiatives all over the place in the city of New Orleans, and Amy is working that. So, for those of you, again, Amy, would you stand up so they can see all fresh food initiative issues on this page? You wanna touch base with Amy before you leave, so she can see who you are, and she can give you the details about what the process is. Fair enough? All right. Melvin Rodri, thank you. Where are you? Melvin's a great leader. Melvin was a part of a commission, a committee that I put together a couple of years ago to talk about how we can continue to make the tourism industry thrive and grow. As you know, in the state of Louisiana, we decided back in the 70s, we wanted to be an international competitor in tourism. Collectively, we've all accomplished that goal. We now have a tourism industry that employs 125, 30,000 people. It's a $9 billion industry in the city alone. It's an $80 billion industry that employs more people than any other industry. And so, I broaden the definition of tourism, because I think it's richer and deeper, and I call it the cultural economy, right? And we talk about the economic impact of culture. So, art, music, historic preservation, digital media, film. We did more major motion pictures in the city of New Orleans than any other city in America, except Los Angeles and New York. $500 million book of business this year, 37 major motion pictures. It's really good. So, in order to keep that going, right, you have to do what all of you have said tonight. I think there's a common refrain out there. Fix the streets, make the quarter clean, right? Protect the thing that produces a lot of income. Get your infrastructure straight, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of those comments are designed to help support the infrastructure, as well as it was in the city living in the quarter, to some of the issues that Melvin talked about. So, he hit on a hot-button issue. Now, don't anybody throw me out this room, okay? But I was a state legislator for a while, and Jackie was a council member for District C. And y'all know I ran from there twice before this time, right? So, I had to come into the quarters. I had to come into the quarters and listen to everybody and all the competing interests, 'cause this is like a, you know, it's a country unto itself in many ways. It has a lot of different interests, right? Right? That's amen for everybody that lives in the quarter. We got residents, we got business owners, you know, you got the job. And, yeah, thank you, Tony. And what he asked was, I want you, I wanna remember this, is there a dedicated revenue source? That's what the question he asked. And then he said, oh, and by the way, we're responsible for our sidewalk and into the street too. And if everybody would take care of their own business, maybe the city would have less to do. And if the city did everything they did, and then we did everything we would do, maybe we'd meet in the middle, and it would all work. So, the issue about that is kinda up to you, right? 'Cause this is the thing that wraps around it. You remember some time ago, they tried to create some kind of district? It's a federal district, state district, city district, I don't know, some kind of district. And then they all got in a fight about what the boundaries would be. I wanna be in, or I don't wanna be in. I want it on this street, I want it on that street. Who's gonna pay? Is it a property tax, sales, income tax? Why don't you tell the state to give us back some of their money? We had that little big discussion, right? There was a public vote, y'all voted against it, I think, right? Right. So, about the tax, but blah, blah, blah. You gotta think about this as you go forward. Everything is about money, right? In terms of new and more. Taking it from somebody that's got it, another part of the budget, creating a new revenue stream and making sure you keep it. There are a thousand different ways to have that discussion, but it appears as though there's an invitation by a whole bunch of people to say, we need to start having that discussion again. Number one, the French Quarter is probably, if it's not the most historic district in the United States of America, it's close. And if it's not the most sacrosanct, it's close, right? We know, we know that we have a crown jewel here, and we know that we have to protect it, and we know that, and this is for all of us, this is not an indictment of anybody, we haven't done a great job in making that happen. So, a lady, one of the young ladies that put a card up didn't say this, 'cause she was too nice. She said something else, but what she wrote on her card was, does the mayor ever walk around the French Quarter? And if he did, he would see what I see. That's what she wrote. I'm not gonna call you out. The answer to that is yes, I do. I walk around the French Quarter all the time. And I don't feel good about the status of the French Quarter. First of all, I'll say this about the sidewalk. I can't stand, I cannot stand, I hate it, when people park on the sidewalk. I hate it. And I'm telling my team right now, if anybody parks on the sidewalk, tow them away. Now, I want you to, I want, before y'all applaud, let me just tell you about how this works. Mr. Mayor, will you please enforce the law? And tomorrow, one of y'all's gonna run up on me and say, I can't stand those red light cameras. I hate them. I ran through a yellow light, and I got a ticket, right? All you're gonna say, you gotta enforce the law. So, I got a speeding ticket going through the school zone the other day. Can you believe that? What is wrong with you people? Right? Or, or, on the Sunday before Mardi Gras, one of the police officers that had the audacity to be working on Sunday, y'all look slow, had the audacity to be working on Sunday, walked into the Blue Mile, and the lady had been on the street selling those dresses like she does for the last 30 years, but she didn't have a permit. And when we went into the bar, the law says there was supposed to be a manager, but nobody was on duty. You told them they had to stop doing stuff until they got right, and you interrupted Mardi Gras. Is there something wrong with you, Mr. Mayor? And I didn't hear a lot of, bunch of people in there standing up saying, you need to enforce, you need to enforce. What I heard was, I can't believe that you're threatening the culture of the city. Are you, are we together?
Yeah.
All right. So, before you ask me, this is like the Blight issue. I asked it before, you asked me to start enforcing the law. When it gets enforced, it's gonna get enforced, and it's gonna get forced equally, and it's gonna get enforced across the board, right? And there not gonna be any exceptions. So, the point to that is, what happens is, if you haven't done a good assessment of the law that's on the books, 'cause we have some anachronistic laws on the books, old laws, and I tell these guys, look, you don't have any discretion, get out there and get it done, right? We gotta start a little thinking about exactly what that means, and we have to make sure that the laws on the books are fair, they're right, they make sense, they meet with common practices, and equity and justice and all that stuff, because I wanna get after that. Now, the Pikiun, who's here today, where are you? Raise your hand, Mr. Pikiun, to the room where you are. He's been writing about me, the mayor's on this tear to enforce the law. You know what, I am. Now, we haven't gotten to where we're enforcing every law, because we're recalibrating all of the different offices in the city, but we're getting to the point where we're gonna be able to say, look, whatever it is, it is, and if you get a ticket, pay it. If you speed, you know what, you got a problem. If you park on a sidewalk, you're getting towed away, all right? And everybody in the city's just gotta be down for it, but we do live in New Orleans. How many y'all jaywalked in the last week? I'm just saying. Chief jaywalking to this alone. All right. Which one of y'all now got pulled over and let a ticket for jaywalking is not gonna show up in my office, Dalton, and say, have you lost your damn mind? Right? No, so I'm just, I mean, I'm just making a point. I want y'all, I wanna drill this into everybody, because when we start doing it, how about this? You can't grill on the neutral ground when a demon is coming. How about that? You know, it's against the law to grill on the neutral ground here, but we didn't really mean that. We just meant the big barrel with the kerosene in it. We didn't mean the other pot. How about, how about you can't put a barricade and bring your sofa and your bed and your mom and them out there with all your aunts and uncles and take up the whole block? How about that? Can't do that either. And so, right, we all got a piece of architecture, so we gotta, what I'm saying to you is, as my mama used to say, be careful what you ask for. And I'm just gonna throw that out there for your mother to hang for a while. All right. Kailin, right. Okay, yeah, you're right about the sheriff's sale. I agree with you, okay? So, here's the thing, we live in a city that's got historic properties in it. It's a great city. We've got some of the best architecture in the world. But you know, and I know, that a lot of people who don't live here anymore, right, from many, many, many years ago, let a lot of properties deteriorate. And guess what? Some of them are gonna fall down, all right? And even some of them that are historic are so far gone that they're threatening people's lives, and not every building is worth saving. Now, trying to figure out which is which is hard, right? So, we have board members and commission members in here, and we gotta figure it out. Now, I can tell you this, 60,000 blighted properties in the city of New Orleans. Now, that's way above anywhere else in America. The only city that's even close to us is Detroit, and we are ahead of them. And there are some buildings that anyone of us could go look at, and we would say, tear that thing down. Yeah, but you know that architect that lived back in 1632, wrecked that thing. If he was here, he'd say, tear that thing down. Right? So, what we have to do, and this was after Katrina, we gotta get together, right, with the Preservation Resource Center, all of the preservationists, and we ought to be able to categorize properties and identify those that are not historic, that if they're a threat to public safety, can be taken down to the ground. We ought to be able to identify those that are absolutely historic and should never be taken down to the ground absent imminent danger of collapse, and for those in the middle, we ought to have a process to quickly figure out which is which. Now, it makes a lot of sense if you can take something to a sheriff's sale and to give it back in commerce to do that. That makes sense. That's why we have this entire Blight mechanism that we set up, and we're encouraging to do that way, but we don't need to spend a whole lot of time, like they do on some of our wonderful commissions. And when I'm bored, which is most of the time, I turn on that C-SPAN, and I watch our wonderful commissions argue with each other. I watch the people from the Garden District argue about how we need to tear down a blighted property in the Garden District, 'cause you know the Garden District's a really special place, but if someone's from the Ninth Warding wanna tear down a building, name a problem. And that happens. If I'm lying, I'm dying. Is that true? Okay? And so, you know, there are a lot of equity issues that go in, and what we try to do is find a system that's fair and that works. Our Blight system that we're creating, that we're building from nothing, all right, is a pretty good start, but we have a long way to go. That's why I need you to come. I need you to help me. This is not antagonistic. So, anybody that's got eyes on this, so, all you neighborhood organizations that wanna play, I can tell you right now, I got a job for you. Help me with Blight. Walk your neighborhood. Bring every piece of paper that you have to see Jeff A. Bear. Jeff, where are you? Stand up. This is our Blights Zone? He looks like it's our, don't he? Look at that. Aren't you smart again? I brought that to MIT, said, well, he's smart. Bring every piece of paper you have about every home that you need, that you need advice or counsel, and we will try to help you find a way through the process. And these Blight Stat meetings are important, because it helps us measure it, and we got a long way to go. Our goal is to rehabilitate, to take down, to put back into commerce, whatever it is, 10,000, right, in three years. And if we keep doing that, and we have a way to put them back in commerce, that's gonna speed the process up a lot. So, on the Blight issue, man, I just, more hands, the better. So, I thank you, I thank you for that. Bill Murphy, St. Rock Market. Now, he, he, he hasn't, where, Bill, where are you? Okay. He made a good point, if he, if he would've told us that six months ago. What he said was, I don't see any rhyme or reason to what's going on. St. Rock Market is down and nasty. All y'all remember, Ron was used to be there? Your momma sent you over there to get your crawfish? Who remembers that? Y'all don't remember that? Your momma used to send you back there. That was a good market. The healing center opened up across the street, right? With this Sunday, where's the young lady? Ms. Jolavet, meet the new Ms. Jolavet from Opelousas. I don't know where you from, but, ah, brother, look at that. Oh, wait, hold on, stand up? Stand up? Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I'm not gonna talk about that. I'm not going on. Oh, we're getting Charlotte tonight, I can tell. But what he said was, look, I'm sitting there, I don't see a whole lot going on, but let me, let me kinda paint a picture for you. For those of you on St. Claude, you all know where the St. Rock Market is, right? So, the healing center, all right, just opened up, a wonderful renovation that the president and a whole bunch of other folks did. So, that anchor is good. Behind St. Rock Market, along that street, there was a street skate that was done, and that entire block is working. As you move towards St. Rock Playground, we have capital funds in to actually redo St. Rock Park and to redo the pool. And the St. Rock Market is about to start renovation in October of this year, where that entire structure is gonna be completely renovated and put back in its historic context, and there's gonna be a communal market and other things that go around there. So, when you tie all of that together, which should be done by October of 2012, that entire corridor is gonna help stand itself back up. On top of that, there are a number of different road projects going on in that area. So, let's talk next year and see how we're doing, and follow, follow up with us if those dates are not hit, okay?
What about blighted properties you use for jobs?
Yes. That fall, again, blighted properties, thank you for reminding me about that. We walked that neighborhood a number of different times, we've done a number of different Blight sweeps, and my bet is, if you give us the specific ones, I think they're in the system already.
I can go by heroin there tonight.
Would you please? And just, you can just talk to Jeff before you go, but thanks, and we'll follow up with it on that. Najee, thank you so much. Najee's done a great job, and I appreciate her work. Tremé is a really important native for so many different reasons. The connection with Haiti is real, and we have not only a historical connection, but a real connection with the people of Haiti because of what they've gone through, what we went through. The museum in Tremé is really kinda moving in the right direction, but Tremé's having the same problem that the quarter has. Now that a lot of people wanna come, it's putting a lot of pressure on it. So, here's the thing, I know this is a crazy issue that gets people a lot excited, but how big should the buses be when they go through the quarter? How big should the garbage trucks be?
Soar.
Yeah, right. So, we gotta think through all of that stuff as we manage our historic areas, and so, we'll continue to talk to them. By the way, happy birthday. 200 years, 2012, that's a good thing, right? So, that's fine, and I appreciate it. All right. Let me try to go a little bit faster for you, 'cause I'll put y'all to sleep. Jacinta Gonzalez, the chief, chief, would you, where are you? Would you touch base with the chief? We have, you made some good points, especially about the need to have access, you know, through language, and I appreciate it. I think the sheriff was here a little bit earlier. I don't know that I've seen him, but the sheriff comes to all the meetings, he said hello. We, you need to address the issue of ICE holds directly with him. ICE is the immigration hold that she spoke to a little bit about. So, you're gonna have to, would you address that with him directly if you could? All right. Kathy Jolavet, I talked to you already, the city of New Orleans, where is Dr. DeSalvo? Would you please stand up? This is Dr. DeSalvo, he's our health commissioner. We have been named, thank you, Dr. DeSalvo. We have been named one of the first ladies, let's move cities, where we try to get the kids out and do more. We also, as you know, are doing a lot of prevention now. Dr. DeSalvo was really the lead person to help create 80 primary healthcare clinics in the city. As the nation kinda grapples with Obamacare or not, right? One thing that everybody agrees on is the need for preventive care. And so, the city of New Orleans, your city, got way ahead of that nationally. We now have 80 primary healthcare clinics in neighborhoods all over the place that treated 350,000 patients last year. Just one of them, to give you an idea, the St. Thomas Health Clinic, which is on Magazine, and Josephine Street, does mammograms for 300 women every month, right? So, that's the kinda outreach that you need. She spoke to the issue of nutrition, they're doing a lot of that work in the healing center, so I appreciate that and commend that to you. Linda Marlin and Bill Miller, Bill, you didn't get a chance to talk, but sidewalks. So, I wanna, I wanna talk about that again, because somebody asked me, Leo, I think you asked me this, if it wasn't, forgive me. Who asked me about the hospitality zone? Yes, sir, I'm sorry. He asked me whether or not we're thinking about creating a hospitality zone. The answer to that is, yes, we're thinking about it, and it's part of a large initiative that includes the quarter, but not just the French Quarter. The idea is that in the next 16 to 18 months, we're gonna have like 150 events, conventions, small festivals, and big things. The Final Four, the Sugar Bowl, and it's gonna end with the Super Bowl. And if we're gonna have all those visitors coming into the city, we have to make sure that they're safe, and we have to make sure that the places they go are clean and hospitable for them and for us as well. So, my, and this is just me, this could change, but you know, they gotta get here mostly through the airport, so the airport's gotta be cleaned up, and it's gotta be okay. And when you get up on that on-ramp, and you come into Jefferson Parish, that highway's gotta look nice, right? And you come down into the city, let's say you're getting off at any one of the ramps, whichever one you're getting off on, right? The one that goes by the municipal auditorium, or the one that goes down by the convention center, those highways need to be clean. And when you get down on the bottom of it, the grass needs to be cut, right? And then when you get to the convention center, and you decide you wanna go to the Snug Pepper for a hamburger, right? Or the Dicky Brandon's, or the Galatoise, or whatever else you're gonna, Crystal Burger. I'm just saying, and I won't tell you where I go, but IHOP. Right? That entire space, and as Melvin said earlier, 95% of the people that come in eventually come into the French Quarter. And so, I wanna use that time, that space of time, as an opportunity for us in those areas to clean up our act and to get better. So, as you can, you can appreciate, as you get into the French Quarter, what that means is getting the light poles back up, getting the street sidewalks fixed, getting the streets redone. By the way, somebody asked me about the Regional Planning Commission, wondering about that, we'll be in the budget. We're gonna, we grew up putting up $1 million to draw down $6 million for streets in the quarter. So, unless the council doesn't let me, the council said yes. So, I got two votes. And in any event, that's important. Anytime we can leverage $6 million worth of money, we'll do that all the time, right? That's called spending money to make money, and we believe in that. So, we're trying to conceptualize what that geographic area should look like. Who are all of the major players in it? Public and private. Get them in a room, and then start thinking about, not only what needs to be done, but here's the thing, I got a lot of people telling me what needs to be done. I hear that all the time, and I can do it in my sleep. What I really need is somebody who's really smart to tell me how to do it, and that usually allows a little, little grinning, a little scratch, as we like to say, on Palm Street. When we get to the issue of scratch, the question that gets a bit loose, and how you're gonna spend it, and where you're gonna get it spent first, right? That's a harder discussion to have, but we need to set up some kind of mechanism to think about that. Now, you call it a hospitality zone, call it whatever you want, or it could be an issue that's completely separate from the French Quarter. The French Quarter wants to have a different issue, or it could be a combination of both. But I raised the issue of the hospitality zone, because many of you will remember, although y'all were kind enough not to raise it, that when the Super Bowl, when they had that big thing that came in last year, and we put that big stage up in the French Quarter, and everybody's, yeah, you see how nice y'all were? We didn't do a good job of coordinating and talking and making that thing work the way it was supposed to. So, we wanna, we wanna not have that again. French Quarter Fest, which I adore and love, I didn't like the way the traffic patterns worked during that. I think we can do a better job of that, but if we think about all of that stuff early, we can kinda get a handle on it, and for those people that are residents in the French Quarter, you know, a lot of visitors are coming in, and it's a burden that you bear, because you wanna live here and you're okay with it. We gotta get better at that. And so, I just think that's a big, broad discussion, Melvin, that we, and a whole bunch And so I just think that's a big, broad discussion, Melvin, that we and a whole bunch of us have to have about how to organize that and what the sources of revenues are that exist or that could be produced to actually create a stable Quarter that's clean, sidewalks are clean, ordinances reinforced, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think we're there yet, but I think that we're way open to having that discussion. All right, let's see. Aaron Clark, all right, fund the ITP, all right, he wants me to give the energy to the defendants office as much as I give to the judges and as much as I give to the district attorney. So here's the issue. The Congress says we're not giving anybody any more money because we borrowed too much and they had a fight with the president and now they want to scale back every penny. You ever know that thing, some stuff rolls downhill? That eventually hits the street, right? And so then they tell the states, we're not giving y'all any money. And you know what the state says? State says, you know what, Mr. Mayor, we're not funding the office of image and defender anymore, even though it's a state responsibility, so you pay for it. And by the way, the DA's a state office too and we're not paying for that either. So what happens is the council members, all of a sudden, are sitting here, nor it is our responsibility, right? Funding the UQRA Commission, those are all our responsibilities. All of a sudden, we have these things that we call unfunded mandates, right? This is, this is a mandate. Somebody better pay their lawyers, whether they're prosecuting or defending, or somebody is getting out of jail and going somewhere else, et cetera, et cetera. And so we will just hear me here and take this to the bank. All this discussion that's going on about China and India and Greece and the European Union, right? Y'all watching that? Okay? And the United States of America affects you. There is no issue that they're talking about that is not local because it all gets down here and what it all means is you got to pay for more. So when all those folks from Washington DC are talking about how they don't want any federal spending, you hear about that? Let me just talk to you people in New Orleans real, all right? The federal government's responsibility is to keep the Mississippi River dredged so that boats can go up and down it. And if they don't dredge the Mississippi River, that's federal spending, all right? The Mississippi River closes, $400 million dollar day economic impact to the United States of America. Port of New Orleans shuts down, thousands of jobs go away. Restoring the coast of Louisiana so that we can protect the livelihood of the people in New Orleans is a federal issue. No federal spending, no coast. Any healthcare clinics that treat people, federal asset, no federal spending, no healthcare clinics. All of that stuff, all comes down to the bottom and it eventually comes to you. And the issue gets to be really simple. Mr. Mayor, can you fix my street light? No. Can you fix my sidewalk? No. Can you open a morgue thing? I don't know. Right? That's where all of that ends up, or not. And so that whole discussion, at the end of the day, gets to be in my money. So here's the thing, government across America is getting smaller. It has to. It's got to get faster, it's got to get leaner and we have to be aggressive about getting rid of race fraud and abuse. We're going to do that, but even when we do all of that, right? You got to talk about whether or not there's enough money to go around to satisfy the needs and the concerns based on what the economy is here, what people are willing to pay, what they can pay, what's smart, what produces growth and what doesn't. And we are in the midst of a huge, huge paradigm shift in this country. In 1990 to the year 2000, not so bad a decade, right? But the first decade of the 21st century was not our best time. I want y'all to think about that. The first decade of the 21st century was not our best time. We got attacked, we were in two wars, we paid for those wars with credit cards, right? We did, all of us did, together. We had, in this area, we had Ike, Gustaf, Katrina, Rita, the BP oil spill, the national recession, we had Lee, we had that baby fire, right? We had a rough time. And we had deficit spending in the state that went on for a long time. You don't get out of that overnight and it takes really hard decisions in order to get you back to a healthy, sustainable community. The reason I was so aggressive on the budget last year is because I wanted to get us to a sustainable place where we weren't relying on one-time money or a whole bunch of federal funds, whatever it is we decided to have, we could pay for ourselves, right? With a little help from our friends, but not with a lot of help from our friends. And as we get into these discussions about what we have to do, I need y'all to help me figure out exactly how we're going to get it done and who's going to pay what, where, when and how. I'm way open to a big discussion about the folks in the French Quarter of creating some kind of district, right? That takes responsibility for the things that need to be done, from picking up the garbage and putting that lemony fresh down. Go find Sydney somebody and get that lemony fresh stuff out his back pocket. I'm going to get a black outfit on, put my Zara boots on and get on the back of a truck. Put a wig on, see how I do. Right? You know, let's think about what that, what that looks like. And I agree with you, I think, I think we can do a better job, all of us, of making the Quarter clean, but hang on to this now, right? How many people put their garbage in places where you're not supposed to and hoping somebody picks it up? How many people are paying what they're supposed to pay, right? Et cetera, no, I, yeah. I was asking for the people who are not paying who raises their hand and they wouldn't do that, but you get my point, all right? Okay, Brian, I talked to you a little bit, better enforcement, I completely agree, I answered your hospitality zone question. Boards and commissions, two people made this great point and it's an excellent point. There are a lot of people in here that are, where's Ralph? Ralph, serving on the board of commission, Ms. Jaffier's, I see a lot of other people in here. Thank you so much for your service, they gave us a huge amount of time. Some of them that have been there for a long period of time kind of know what the drill is, but we're constantly reprising boards and commissions and continuing professional education is absolutely necessary, not only on what the laws are, but ethics training as well. And so that's a great, that is a great suggestion, we will take that to heart, Judy and Jackie and Chris, and we will work on that together, so I thank you for that as well. All right. Robert Hannan, where are you? Robert, I want you to see Scott Hutchison, Scott. Scott, as I told you, was the head of cultural affairs for the state, he's now doing that for the city. When I was lieutenant governor, right after the storm, we created something called the Cultural Economy Foundation where we raised about, what, $2 million? And what we wanted to do was get it back into the hands of artists who lost all their tools. So if you were a painter, we bought a paintbrush, if you were a trumpet player, we brought you a trumpet. And we started working with artists, we actually have a health clinic now for artists that we help triage. And artists, ladies and gentlemen, I can tell you, right after the storm, they stood us back up. Today, just today, what's this guy, so where's Mary Beth, is she here? Where's her name, Michael Harrigan? We got a guy, y'all have read about this guy, he's from Kansas. He comes into the city about every three months, brings his truck, he repairs instruments. He sets up on the side and any musician that wants his instrument fixed, he fixes them for free. Is that spectacular or what? And artists have been, every one of them, you know, have been out there working really, really hard and so we want to connect with you and if you can connect with us through Scott, that would be, that would be great. All right. Dalton Sevillot, you're a district man, right? And he talked about neighborhood engagement and I've addressed that question already. All right, Emmanuel Kane, Armstrong Park, kids in neighborhood mean green space, too much concrete. Okay, all right. This is where jazz started, literally. It's really, really important. When we came into office, you know the story, we inherited a really nasty situation. We shut down the contractor that was working on the project because in my opinion, they had completely annihilated the work that they had done, they immediately sued us, we got caught up in court. I could have found $3 billion someplace else and taken it from Nard and refixed it, but I thought that's not a wise thing to do, so it took us a while to get that thing back up and operating. That park is being renovated right now, it's going to be finished October what? October 31st, the park's going to be finished, the renovations that were predetermined and pre-designed. And then we're going to, the park's going to be done. So Leo says, don't open the park until we have a management plan and an organizational structure. And some of your folks want to meet with some of our folks, the answer to that is sure. I want you to meet with Cedric and Michelle, my two deputy males, and y'all can give them your thoughts about that particular area. There've been a couple of other questions, I'm sorry, let me finish this. I don't know, I don't know how to answer your question about what other major renovations we might do to create more green space, to pull up more concrete, but as we look at master planning for Armstrong Park in the context of Tremay, right? And in the context of Iber-Ville, which is going to be a massive opportunity for us to rethink that part of, that side of the French Quarter, anything's possible. You know that before we came into office, there was a little dust-up about an RFP that went out for somebody to come in and manage a municipal auditorium, that's not going to happen, not that group, right? But if you think about what we just talked about, President Obama gave us a $30.5 million grant to think about how to repurpose not only Iber-Ville housing, but the rail spur that's going to go next to it, the kind of cultural economic activity that would go on in Armstrong Park tied to the Sanger Theater, tied to the redevelopment of Canal Street, almost in bringing in 300 blocks of possibility, you got to put Armstrong Park in that mix and begin to start thinking about as a community, what you want to do with it. I don't like that fence either. That fence that surrounds Armstrong Park, I mean, if it was just me, I might say, you know, why don't you take that thing down and make it more hospitable? Somebody smarter than me might say, that ain't such a smart idea, let's really think about it. If we want to repurpose a municipal auditorium, the concept of turning that into a cultural center, right? That works for the entire community in conjunction with the Mahalia Jackson Theater is an interesting idea, but I'm not ready to pull the trigger on what that means. I think we need to talk about it and put that in into the whole mix of Canal Street, right? Back through Tremay, over from the I-10, over to Rampart Street and see where that takes us. And kids always ought to be part of that discussion as well, all right? All right, I'm getting there. Shelley Waggaeshback, graffiti, what can we do about it? I hate graffiti. Where's my graffiti man? He must be a little while ago, there he is, wait and stand up, the graffiti man, right? Cynthia Sauvain there, where are you? Cynthia, where are you? All right. Would you, Shelley, would you talk to Cynthia about graffiti and y'all can talk about that issue? Sue Klein, quality of life court like Memphis, I agree with you. I think that we will ought to pursue that. Again, you guys, enforcement, if we're going to go to enforcement, I want to give you a ticket rather quickly and I want to make it easy for you to pay me. Right? I mean, this better, I mean, you're getting tricked, you might make it as painless as possible. So we talked a little bit about this with the eighth district, about could you actually put something downtown? We've explored that issue. I can't tell you where we've gotten very far about it, but we'll look into it, but it's not a bad idea. All right, Kerry Foley Kessler, infrastructure enforcement, parking ordinance, same issue with the Quarter, a big issue that we need to deal with, right? And we're going to talk about how we're going to move forward on all of those issues. All right, Bob Sims, reinvest money in infrastructure, we talked about this already, this is similar to Melvin's idea, right? About finding a revenue stream that's coming into the Quarter somehow, redirecting it and make sure it stays here to do parking enforcement, litter abatement, things like that. And we will certainly do that. John O'Brien sidewalks, we talked about that already. Leo, you gave me three, municipal auditorium, management plan and who's the liaison for the park? I've told you who the liaisons are, they will meet with you. I spoke about the issue of management, you can talk to them about it and coming up with a security plan. I'm not committing not to open the park until those things are done. I'm not sure that I agree with you that the park can't be opened, but we'll talk to you about it. And the plan for the municipal auditorium is that we need to create a plan that works. I don't think the plan that worked before was on the table, I didn't like the way it was done. I think there's a better way to do it, there's a much more open process and I think now that we're doing the Iber-Ville piece, you may get other major private sector development to come help us with that. Jeremy W., I answered your question, you asked us if you were going to be able to leverage that $6 million from the regional planning commission, there will be $1 million in the budget to leverage and that's $6 million, we're going to design $7 million of street repairs in the Quarter. Vincent Marinello, sanitation is levels diminished, I agree with you. Marcell, I'm sorry, what did I say, Marinello? Sorry about that. Vincent introduced me as Mar Marinello the other day, so I'm sorry. That's terrible. Oh, Lord. All right, so here's the thing, you know that when we came into office, I renegotiated every one of the garbage contracts. Every one of those garbage contractors took a haircut. And now one of the issues is managing to make sure they show up and do what they're supposed to do and I am not happy with the services in the Quarter. And we're going to get on them and work really, really hard and then we're going to talk about that issue as we go forward because I think the Quarter can be cleaner and it deserves to be. Street signs, this is the second meeting where people talked about street signs, I'm completely in agreement with you, I've asked Cedric to look into the possibility of actually redoing most of the street signs in the city. Now, y'all don't need to tell me how old y'all are, I'm 51, all right? And I don't see as well as I did and so I want big signs, right? I want big ones. Because we don't have signs on some of our streets and the signs, some of them are smaller and you can't read them. And by the way, I want the, I want the number of block that I'm on kind of in the bottom corner, right? That would be a better, that would be a better thing to do, but that's probably, how much that costs, I think about $6 million? It's just $6 million, $6 million between friends. I don't know, something that we need to, we need to work on. Deborah Cotton, great suggestion, Allen Square, Allen, where are you? This is my tech guy, right? Allen Square, she's talking about trying to find a better landing page on her website, she says it's easy to do. On the Tremay Center. Deborah says it's easy to do, Allen, right? When's the Tremay, what's the date on the Tremay Center?
We're going to rebuild it this month. The Tremay Center's on the list, we have money for it, all right? But we're rebuilding it this month. And infrastructure, you're kind of conflating two issues. You said that we spend 58% on public safety, 2% on economic development. True, right? Which means that we don't spend that much on infrastructure. Well, we have two pieces of the budget. We've got a cash flow side, programs that come in and programs that come out, then we have a capital side. The capital side collectively is bigger than the entire other budget, so the capital side's about $550 million. So y'all remember, we have those 100 projects, that's $411 million. Cedric and you seem just generated another 176 because they're really aggressive and female, which is good. Those are designed for the police stations, fire stations, streets and roads, all right? And then the rest of the budget that Andy talked about, the number's four, 485. That's the programmatic side, that's funds, law, et cetera, et cetera. Of that pot, she's absolutely right that we spend 58% on broadly law enforcement, police, fire, EMS, right? Sheriff, DA, IDP, we spend 2% on economic development and we spend less on kids. Now, our challenge together is how we keep the city safe, right? And we make sure that we spend money on the things that we need so you balance that number off. You can't do that in a year. That's a five-year transition from one place to the next. The young lady, Michelle Luvette, that was talking about preventive care, that's the whole idea about not waiting for people to get sick and paying a lot of money in the hospital, but make sure you keep everybody out because you're spending money much better on the front end than you do on the back end. And that, my friends, is a, is a, you know, interesting thing. Rachel Reisman, fresh food, $360,000, looking for C. Amy Cork. That was a good commercial, y'all double team it, it's 30 and 30 and that. Ms. Augusta Butler, great job on Sawing Center, thank you so much. She lives on Portland Avenue, so you talked, she talked about the problem with traffic problems and folks stopping and potential wrecks and there were six of them in the last couple of months. So Chief, would you please see the chief and talk about that? Ms. Butler, where are you? There you go, would you please stand up so the chief can see you? Chief, you see Ms. Butler? Would you talk to her about that? Thank you very much. Ben Harwood, Armstrong Park, right? Talked to you about that a minute ago. If you want to see Cedric and Michelle and talk about it, happy to. Mary Cross, this was her second meeting, this man is wonderful. Sidewalks and holes in the sidewalks, I completely agree with you and she didn't tell you this, she's a tour guide and she's ticked off because we're not communicating well enough with the volunteer tour guides about how to handle their business, there's a meeting scheduled next Friday, when is it? Next Friday, Andy, plus, will you stand up? Andy's handling this for us, to work with the volunteer tour guides to make it easier so you don't have to go out to the airport and get your FBI background check, all right? We're working on that to help. All right, Kay Coons, trucks off Portland, I agree with you, if we can, I grew up uptown and there used to be trucks on the Portland Avenue and a bunch of other things and brick houses. If there's a way that we can control that traffic, we ought to be able to do that. And she talked about the streetcar food press. Now Kristen's in my office about every other day, all up in my ear about this streetcar, going every day. So we're in a fight right now with Norfolk Southern. Norfolk Southern owns the railroad, they say it's illegal for us to put streetcar tracks across it, we say it's not. Michelle Luvette from Opelousas, Lafayette, I'm sorry, Lafayette. Did y'all know that Sunset was the, was the sweet potato capital of the world in Louisiana? Do y'all even know where Sunset is? How many people know, come on, I'm not kidding, how many people know where Sunset is? Sunset, sweet potato capital of the world in Louisiana and they got a Yen Festival there too. How about that? I'm going to give y'all no culture from around the state. Let's see. All right, so the problem is Norfolk Southern says no, and Met, who's our city attorney, soon to be a federal judge appointed by President Obama, as soon as he said it, goes back to work and confirms it. First African-American member in the issue of the state. That's right. So we're going to get in that fight. Now, we don't know if we're going to win or not, we're going to try to get it passed there, if not, we'll find, we'll find another way. All right, John Messenger, Barwater, St. Clair, all right, Markey Park, I know you're going to think I'm lying, but I was there today. I was. And I actually make the comment, what are all them dogs doing in there? So I'm just telling you, you got a lot of dog lovers in here, right? How many animal lovers do we have in here? Whew, loving animals, right? You're trying to mess with somebody's dog or cat, you're getting in trouble. Yeah, but here's the problem, right?[1710.01]
Yeah, but here's the problem, right? Everybody likes to go run their dogs in the park, and some people like to run their kids in the park, right? And the kids running dogs in the storey. And so we gotta have a talk with each other about who's supposed to be using the park when, and whether you're supposed to have the dog on the leash, and if the dog, you know, does, hears our business, that you go to pick it up. All right? And so that's a serious issue. And, you know, again, for those of you who, how many people that have dogs? How many, let me see if I can play with this for a second. How many people that have dogs think that I should enforce the law really aggressively about anything? Like if it says you're not supposed to have a dog that goes to the bathroom in a Mard Park and you're running your dogs in the park, right? I'm just, I'm just making a point. I'm just saying, when y'all say, well, I didn't mean that. The other day we were doing hurricane protection, right? And I told everybody, go ahead and park on the neutral ground. You remember I said that? No, I'm not. It would be in New Orleans. You should have put it on the neutral ground. I didn't mean on the streetcar track. I didn't. But, but that's what I said. So Justin, where's Justin Augustin? Justin, the head runs to RTA, says, Mr. Mayor, I got some, I've been knowing Justin since I've been a baby, and he's nice and he says, Mr. Mayor instead of Mitchell, like my mother. He says, I got, you told the people that you park on the neutral ground. I said, I know I did. He goes, but they're parking on the streetcar track. I said, no, they're not. He said, that's what you said. So my after action item about things are not gonna be, next time, I'm gonna be clear about what I'm saying. I'm just about enforcement, I'm just making a point to y'all. You know, when we start enforcing, everybody starts yelling. I'm gonna say, but I asked and I gave you permission. So I'm just gonna kinda let that hang out there. All right. Michelle Kimble, Preservation Resource Center, right? Share sales, I talked about that already. All right, share sales are great. The more those we can do, the better. I don't want to put buildings back in combos. If I take a building down, I'd love to do it in a sustainable way, but if it's an imminent danger of collapse, I want to take it down. And I want to work with the Preservation community to do it. Julian Motta, thank you so much. Bike safety, we're like really doing good with bikes, y'all. We really want to make the city walkable and livable. So the Lafitte Greenway is really important because it connects one piece of the city to the next. On most new streets that we're putting up, they're on the direction, right? To make sure that we have bike paths. You go to cities like Chicago and New York, I mean, these are busy places. They got a lot of people and they're biking all over the place. Place is good for you. Get on your bike. Joe Friend, Joe, that was your second buy at the Apple. Joe is for the city, the community planning process, but he talked to District Day, so I dealt with that issue. David Pelter, many issues, sidewalks, public, et cetera. Wait a minute, Dave, you gave me a list of questions. And I'm gonna run through them really quick, and they're all, and they're all good. Public restaurants, we need more in the quarter, we need more bikes, but they gotta go the right way on the right street. Get rid of the graffiti, the gray ghosts in the back. Jazz museum, oh, okay, so this is some deal in my heart. He said, we have another very good ones here, museums, but why is the Old Met listed as a jazz museum when it is not? Okay, it's supposed to be. When I was Lieutenant Governor, I got money from the Department of Interior, and we put some state money on top of it to actually create a state-of-the-art jazz performance center on the top floor of the Met. Now, I don't know why, I gotta better go call the Lieutenant Governor and ask him where they are in that process, but that, I'm sorry? Mr. Loop, he says it's in the works? And it's gonna be open Charlotte. Thank you, Ralph. So happy you came tonight. We partnered with the Department of Interior to take all of the artifacts that are in the Met, open them up, right? And then create a state-of-the-art performance center on the top floor of the Met, and it's evidently been in renovation. I always hoped that it was gonna be finished by now, and will in fact become one of, I hope, one of the finest jazz performance spaces in the city. So I'm excited about that. Sidewalks, I agree with you on that. And street vendors, so here we go. Proper licensing, right? You gotta really, if you're gonna enforce the law, you gotta enforce it, and we gotta figure out who's what. We had this issue just recently with second-line parades, right? With folks that are vending, and we're working through that issue because there's some cultural issues that we want to work through to make sure that the rules and regulations are fair, and then we enforce them across the board. All right, let's see. Lisa Suarez, again, citizen planning process, I've talked about that. Bobby Fujie, so there you are. Come in, would you stand up? This is the commander, right? Would you talk to him? And would y'all work on that as well? Because, you know, again, this is just me, but the streets are for everybody, but everybody needs to be safe. And I just got an issue with people hustling other folks. I don't like it, right? I think everybody's gotta feel safe, and I'm not adverse at all to very aggressive enforcement on that particular issue. So I commend that to you. All right, Leslie Snadowski, Snadowsky?